It is seven o'clock and I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Village of Webster Board and Trustees Order on April 26, 2018. If you would stand. And Don, would you lead us, please, in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dan.
You. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a special question and answer session, and it would be in particular regarding sewer rents. When we had our April 12 meeting, we presented the budget. We had a public hearing. Budget had been presented in the paper. And subsequent to that presentation, we had later in that meeting the signing of a settlement on a lawsuit that had been litigation for over a year. And the stipulations in that settlement were that the village would no longer receive leachate, which it had stopped previous to the settlement. The village would no longer compost at the sewer treatment plant, which it had stopped back in the end of 2016, 2017. The village would pay to the plaintiffs $25,000. Within 30 days, the village would stop receiving septic and RV dump at the wastewater treatment plant with the option of starting again at a later time. However, part of that was that the village would look at an off-site receiving station in order to take any further septic or RV dump. And if the village could not within $100,000, the proposed receiving station at the wastewater treatment plant could not build one within that, then we could build it at the wastewater treatment plant, but then we would owe the plaintiffs an additional $65,000. So having made that settlement post-hearing, and obviously, it could have not been approved by this board had the majority decided not to accept the settlement. Consequent to that, there was a number of things that we needed to look at. And one of those items was the revenue significant. Item was the revenue from the septic reception, the dumping. So that was listed at $110,000. And obviously, if we cannot do that, then that revenue stream would be significantly lowered. And so we sat, we looked at it, and with the hope that, and I do believe that this is a significant possibility, that whether it be onsite or offsite, we would be able at some point within this next, it would be 13 months now, opportunity to receive septic. We lowered that revenue stream to $50,000. We also had to increase by $4,000 because of the need to fund the maximum, if it goes to the maximum, contribution to the study between the village and the town. That agreement was up to a maximum of $4,000 that the village would contribute. And we did make some reductions as well. We reduced the line for building maintenance from, the line was $24,400, down to something in the order of, if I have it correct here...
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen? Sixteen thousand. And we also reduced the line for lab testing from sixteen to thirteen thousand. So we tried to make some reductions. I have fifteen on here. And so we tried to make some reductions to offset the loss of revenue we had as well. As a result of that, the numbers that we have, in the reality of the situation, we had a slight, we tried as hard as we could, many of you were here for the things we went through regarding the general budget, we made a lot of reductions in that. We did get down to a point where we had a deficit of $41,700 or $800. But our deficit, as we projected with the sewer, would be an additional $144,000. And so that total of $186,000 would be coming out of the unfunded reserves. And that is not, I don't think what's in the best interest of this village to take that much money out. So a decision was made that if we were to raise the fees from $98, which we held for two years, to $120, then we would be able to break even with the sewer budget. So that was a decision that was made. I have made that in the paper. I put that in the paper. If you were able to look at the Webster Herald today, you saw my column, you also saw the reporting by Anna Hubbell to the point of $120 per unit. And that will, that breaks us even. We have a break even of the difference of deficit of zero with our balance at this particular point. We would have $86,000 or $886,300 coming in, and we have $886,300 being spent. I'm correct. So that is where we are, and that is something that changed over the last two weeks. And I've tried to explain the reason why it changed, but we would like to open this up to the audience, so anyone who would like to ask questions regarding it. I will do that at this time. If there is no comment from the floor or question from the floor, then we will close this special question and answer session and leave you. And we will move now to a proclamation. Tomorrow is Arbor Day, so in honor of that, I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable source, giving us paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, countless other wood products, and whereas trees are a renewable source giving us paper, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, whenever they are planted and wherever they're planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas National Arbor Day is always celebrated on the last Friday in April. So whereas the Village of Webster wishes to join with communities across the nation in celebration of Arbor Day, and whereas the Village of Webster wishes to promote and recognize the benefits and importance of trees, and whereas the village recognizes the truth in the words of the 19th century Scottish poet Alexander Smith, "A man doesn't plant a tree for himself, he plants it for posterity." And the village further hopes that this celebration will continue as an annual tradition in our community, which will help secure the benefits of trees for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Daryl Byers, Mayor of the Village of Webster, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day in the Village of Webster, and I urge all citizens to participate and celebrate in Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Tomorrow, celebrate Arbor Day. And we have over here, we are a Tree City USA. Believe Jake, we have something going on, right?
Yes, folks in our honor of Arbor Day, our Tree City USA signs are at two of the village entrances on the north and the south end, and I guess I said we've done that today. And we're going to plant trees when it dries up a little bit more.
We have a number going into summer, I think, on the panel, right?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. Anything that you would like to address the board on topic, please do so. Say your name, address, and be glad to listen. Yes?
Peter Eldredge, 59 Dunning Avenue. It's good to see you all tonight. I have just a question, it's a real quick one. There was an allusion to it at the bid meeting on Tuesday, and I just wanted to see, could you let everybody know that might end up watching a video, when you think the planners are going in? If you have, if you have a schedule yet. Jake, maybe you know better? I don't know, so...
We typically go to the baskets, the hanging baskets before the Memorial Day parade, parade before, and whether in fact if we can get the planners out then as well, we'll shoot at that. But obviously, the planners, this is the second year really that we've had about the spring. The first year, as we recall, we got them in the fall.
Right.
Then the fall planning, last year was the spring planning, and this year's been a little cooler than last year.
Yeah, cool. Exactly.
So, to see how everything's progressing, but we were talking earlier today about, you know, starting to get the planners drafted up here and ready to go, and you've got to coordinate with the, with the pit orders, the fill-in, to get those up here ready. And we don't want to send them out empty to burn and dance if they're planted either.
Right.
I think that at the bid meeting, they talked about having them ready by maybe Memorial Day, right? Was that a target?
They sort of said that was what they were thinking about, but I wasn't sure. Jake is like the guy with this stuff.
And obviously, you've got to coordinate with Bill, and get his flowers ready to go in. They do it pretty quick.
Yeah, I think in the past, you know, we don't have a lot of history on these planners, but in the past couple, couple of years, it's been, you know, two, three weeks ahead of time. We'd like to space and coordinate when they're, they're going to go out, when, you know, to watch the weather and to see what it's going to be like, and make sure we coordinate people to follow him up, rate wastewater as soon as he gets them in, and obviously, get the planners out ahead of time, and he plants them right on the street where the air is successful. So that's a couple day, or at least a big part of it, except those, we'll use John's machine from the plant too, and that one.
Well, thank you very much.
We'll contact Bill, maybe we can get together with you and try to coordinate that as to where they might be this year as well. I don't know if we left that out, if they have some ideas to...
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? And I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we'll move to the Village Board Business. We have in front of us a fee schedule for 2018-2019. It has been modified, due to modifications in rent. There is one more that I would like to make, and that is a terminology correction. That would be on page two, if you want that. It would be under sanitary sewers, and if you move down to where it says leachate dumping fee, I believe we should remove that word, leachate, and we are not going to receive that anymore, but we can insert the terminology septic/RV dumping. So if we continue that, that will be the fee. Other than that, I have no other change to it, and so I would ask, there's no comment from the board. Motion to accept the proposed 2018-19 fee schedule as the fee schedule.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next is a resolution to approve the 2018-19 payroll chart. I'll have a chance to take a look at that. Any comments? Questions? If not, I would entertain the motion to accept the 2018-19 payroll chart under...
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Tentative budget modifications, 2018. Did I cover them?
I was just going to reiterate and add the item retained from the general budget, if you'd like me to.
Please.
So the revisions to the general fund include a few items. There was an increase in revenue of $21,747 due to the increase in original anticipated revenues from CHIPS. The increased estimate is per the adopted state budget, which has specifically allotted an estimated $96,747, divided up amongst CHIPS, paid New York, and extreme weather funding. Appropriations have been increased by $5,000 to allow for the village's 1% contract commitment fee, as a result of the Restore New York grant we were recently awarded of $500,000. This is a fee from Empire State Development for grant processing costs. Finally, in order to keep the village tax flat, fund balance will be appropriated in the amount of $41,798, down from the earlier estimated amount of $58,533. So the estimated revenues and expenses for the year are to be $2,686,000 minus $14,000. And as the mayor had already discussed, I really don't have any further additions. He touched on all of them. And with the above modifications that the mayor and I have, I presented to the Board and Trustees, a revised budget to be adopted this evening.
Any additional comments from the board? All right, and I will entertain the motion to approve the presented budget for 2018-19 presented by the Treasurer.
Make your motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers? Motion passes.
I would just make a note in regards to the 1% that the village is putting up for the Restore New York $500,000 grant that came, that was granted to, to the village and to, specifically to 43 Breeze North. I had good news today that we will be progressing and starting immediately, actually. So it will, there will be an announcement, a formal announcement, news release will be coming out shortly, but the work that you have seen initiated, begun on the buildings on East Main that have been put on hold will now continue. So that is a good thing, because there are tenants that are waiting to come in, and this getting going a little bit sooner than July of this year will hopefully allow them to feel comfortable to move out. So it's looking good. Okay, moving on, we have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first is the Village Board meeting of April 12, 2018. And if you have no additions, revisions, or other comments regarding it, I would recommend a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The second set of minutes is for the April 23, 2018 workshop meeting. If you take a look at that, are there any comments, additional revisions that you would like to discuss? If not, I would ask for a motion to accept the items as written by the board. Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
I'll abstain.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, wait. We should make note that, oh, Trustee Valcain was not present at that meeting.
It says no.
It's at the top.
You got you, though.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Why would I abstain?
I don't know.
He's got the life.
I have. Yeah.
I forgot, I apologize. I forgot that one. We did have a giveaway of calling the Village of Webster. Next time. All right. I had an opportunity to go over part of the claims and warrants, and I had a particular question, part that I went over. Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, neither did I.
All right. If there are no questions to it, if you had an opportunity to look it over, then I would ask for a motion to authorize the payments or these claiming warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Nancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We're approaching the end, so if you're looking at financial statements, take a look as to where we are. And we have four months to go, and I'm sure a lot of transfers will be coming up.
Two months to go. You're looking at March's statements.
We only have one month.
Yeah, right, the behind.
So we certainly have, probably within this next month, there will be a number of budget transfers coming through, so...
Hopefully, it won't snow.
Yes, hopefully.
That's like a swear word.
However, we do have, next item on the agenda, item 10, we do have a budget modification. And so that is something that, if you would explain that to us, if you could do that.
We will, we take, you have that hand, right? Thank you. We are taking funds from maintenance agreements and software, $1,000. Our contingency fund, $4,200. Retirement, $2,426. And snow removal personnel, $2,374, to allocate to our park facility repairs line of $10,000. This is to allow for engineering studies to be done on our parks in order to allow us to potentially use parks and rec fees to enhance our parks. Perhaps Jake can speak more to that, since he probably has a lot more knowledge about this than I.
Well, we have, we have an opportunity for a New York State Parks Grant. That grant opens in May and closes in July, so Jake has already put out some feelers for some things that need to be done at Shands Park, but we have an opportunity to focus on Veterans Park as well, which is a real focus for the village, for many of the events and for people who come into the village. So we are looking at the possibility of receiving 50/50, I believe it was a 50/50 grant, where we can use parks money and state money to make enhancements to both parks. Primarily Veterans Park to begin with, that would be our focus. So in order to do that, we need to be able to have some design study and some suggestions, some drawings, et cetera, that we can put into the application.
Does this affect Christmas lights?
Christmas lights, oh my goodness, no.
Did I take it from the Christmas lights line?
I know you're all that sacred to your... So, in light of that, I, we have a resolution to, of the Village of Webster Board of Trustees to appropriate up to $10,000 from the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund to secure services of an engineering firm. The following resolution is being offered, whereas the Village of Webster maintains the Veterans Memorial at Shands Parks, and whereas the Village of Webster has a desire to make improvements to these parks, which will address the needs of users in the public at large, and whereas, to facilitate an informed consideration of potential improvements to the parks and associated costs thereof, the Village of Webster wishes to secure the services of an engineering firm to develop concept plans and budget estimates. And whereas the Village of Webster maintains a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, and to which are deposited the Parks and Recreation fees paid by developers of new construction within the Village of Webster, and whereas the Village of Webster has obtained estimates for the services to be performed, and whereas appropriations from the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund can only be made by resolution, subject to permissive referendum. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Treasurer of the Village of Webster is hereby authorized to appropriate and expend the, from the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, sum not to exceed $10,000, to be used to secure the services of an engineering firm to provide concept plans and budget estimates for improvements within Veterans Park and Shands Park. This resolution shall be subject to a permissive referendum, and thus shall take effect 30 days after its adoption. A notice of adoption of this resolution being subject to permissive referendum shall be published in the Webster Herald, and substantially the form provided in Village Law, Section I would also read at this particular point, there's a notice of adoption of resolution subject to permissive referendum, a notice is hereby given that had a regular meeting held, and shall be read un because we should adopt that resolution first.
Exactly.
I have a question. Maybe it's obvious, but so you're transferring $10,000 from these other accounts from the general fund to pay for the same thing that's going to ultimately come out of the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund?
Yes, in short, it's...
This is just so you can get it done sooner, and the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund is going to reimburse the general fund?
Essentially, we, I didn't take the opportunity to explain it earlier when I had the chance, but...
Otherwise, it looks like you're appropriating $20,000 for this sale.
Yeah, it's the same $10,000. There's a very short window. We were approached about this grant opportunity and felt that with... this grant opportunity and felt that, um, with concept plans and budget numbers, we could apply for a grant rather than applying for funding, you know, the fifty-fifty grant, I guess I'd rather get fifty-fifty of the improvements than the engineering cost. Um, so this could accelerate any project or any improvements by a year, um, but the grant's supposed to be announced here very soon, and it has a late June or July, uh, deadline to get it done, and obviously the engineering will take a while, so we wanted to have the budget, um, the funds available to be able to securely tell the engineering firm, whichever one's selected, you know, when, when the board would have to consider consulting agreement with them to be able to get going on it, um, ahead of the thirty day expiration period, um, for the, um, permissive referendum. So they want to make sure that we can get them going because it's a very, very tight window, um, so we can expend it on a regular budget, but ideally by Parks and Rec, because that's kind of what the idea of the Parks and Rec work for, that is the feeling.
All right, yeah. I'm sure Peter was as confused as I was. But I also want...
So if we would be encumbered by a permissive referendum for the ten thousand dollars, and that could happen, uh, in order to progress and proceed with the, um, engineering design and study, we would have an alternative that we could meet the deadlines by the appropriation of ten thousand dollars for that purpose. We don't have to spend that at all, and it's just there.
One of the things I'd like to add, if I don't mind you doing, I remember when the Parks and Rec fee schedule started and when it was passed, I think Patty was on the board back then, and we had to do a lot of research in what the money could be used for. And basically, uh, the pull from the Parks and Rec Fund, it's either equipment, land, or improvements. So you're very limited on how much, you know, what you can use that land for, or, excuse me, what you can use those funds for, according to law.
And in fact, this review for the design for improvements. Okay? Can I clarify? So, um, if I, uh, to ask a little motion to, um, approve this resolution to appropriate up to ten thousand dollars, uh, to secure the services of an engineering firm...
Make that motion. Sorry.
You didn't vote on the budget transfer yet. Is that what you're voting on first?
Let's do that. You have heard that, uh, transfers, uh, the budget transfer, and, um, so I would entertain a motion to approve the transfer of funds, uh, to the, uh, to the line, ten thousand dollars, uh, for this, uh, study.
I'll make that motion. One second. I don't know why we wouldn't speak at once.
Yeah.
Three and two now.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Balkeen? Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now that we have done that, I entertain a motion to authorize the village treasurer to spend up to ten thousand dollars to secure the services of an engineering firm to develop the concept plans and budget estimates for...
We'll also make that, one second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Thank you. And now that we have done that, and I will read the notice of adoption of resolution subject to permissive referendum. Notice is hereby given that had a regular meeting held on the twenty-sixth day of April two thousand and eighteen, the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster duly adopted a resolution, an abstract of which follows, which, "Resolution is subject to a permissive referendum, a petition for which must be filed within the thirty days of adoption of the resolution." Following is a summary of the resolution adopted by the Village Board of Trustees on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Said, "Resolution authorizes the village treasurer to expend up to ten thousand dollars from the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund to be used to secure the services of an engineering firm to develop concept plans and budget estimates for potential improvements within Veterans Memorial and Shands Park." A copy of the resolution summarized herein is available for public inspection during normal business hours at the office of the village clerk located in Village Hall, Village of Webster, on twenty-eighth West Main Street, up to New York. April twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. At this point, next, we are looking to have authorization, uh, for the village to utilize the county consortium to purchase energy. We have had a, uh, couple of presentations on that. Um, I believe that, um, the town of Webster, actually, which I was not aware of, and had a positive recommendation, uh, regarding this consortium, uh, from Supervisor Mesbit, uh, is also part of this, as well as five villages. It applies to the municipality, um, uh, not to the, uh, residents or to any, any part of the village, except for that which is, uh, run and operated by the, uh, by the municipality, by the village itself. So all of our buildings, sewer department, Village Hall, all of that would be, uh, part of this, uh, this buying power. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, you believe, as I've looked at the data, it, there is cost savings to it, and it was recommended, and so I would ask for the resolution to authorize the village to utilize the county consortium to purchase energy. We are not locked into a long-term...
No. You can get out anytime. And I'll just say real quick, so this is just for you to agree to it, next meeting we will have the actual intermunicipal agreement.
So we're just looking at authorization to utilize this, to look into it.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion. One second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, moving on. John, do you have anything for us?
Uh, I do not, this is...
Well, then Will, we haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah.
Nice to see you.
Been a month.
Yeah. And, uh, a lot has happened in your life since then.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, and, uh...
We play violin again.
Do you two get together any way you meet, uh?
Yeah, thanks.
Someone, someone's...
Yeah, it happens at all, whatever.
I told them to say they were twenty.
Okay, um, Will, let's turn it on to you.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's fairly light, but, uh, some of the highlights, um, so I'm working on our annual stormwater, uh, management D E C report, that's something that we have to report to the D E C on an annual basis regarding, um, our five minimum measures, that they call it, that we are required to do as part of our speedies permit. So, uh, we are a, it's called an M S four, and I talked about it before, but we are municipal separate storm sewer system. So, and like, for instance, in some of the big cities, the storm water in the sewer system, the sanitary sewer go in the same pipe, we're separate. And so because of that, we have a, um, a permit with the D E C, and we have to monitor all of our storm water. And that's not just our own as a municipality, but that's all construction, you know, pre-construction, post-construction, all these stormwater pollution prevention plans, all of that is included in that, so, and some of the things we have to do to meet our requirements every year are like public education, uh, some of the pamphlets we have at the kiosk, some of the utilization of our website for links to other places, and, uh, also training. So John and I have gone to some training, and, uh, we're gonna continue to do that. We actually held a training session here, uh, just earlier this year, and we had, uh, probably one of the largest, uh, amount of people, in fact, we have about over a hundred people here being trained for, um, monitoring and inspecting stormwater pollution prevention plans and sites, so, we're working on that. Uh, the North Avenue law departments are finally, uh, back on track again. I did the insulation inspections, so they're gonna be putting up the drywall, um, they had to do a few things, but other than that, uh, I'm very happy that they're filing, who we can't, they haven't changed the date on their sign yet, I think they were supposed to start renting in two thousand sixteen, but, uh, I'm probably gonna bump it up a little bit there, so. Um, Maplewood is looking along very well, um, they're doing an excellent job, I, I just, I can't say enough with the, for the contractor that's working on the job, they've been very helpful. Uh, it's funny, when, when I found something wrong, um, well, some deficiencies in some of the inspections, the next week when I had to do the inspections, I was followed by five guys that were, who were making sure that everything was done right, and I said, well, that's great, you know, felt intimidated, but it was nice. Um, there's a new tattoo studio going in at the bottom of the Village Vapor Smoke, uh, Modified Collective, I told them, I said that'd be a great band name, Modified Collective, wasn't it? Um, I walked in there, you would not know it's a tattoo studio. This is like the Taj Mahal of tattoo studios, and, uh, from what I understand, the gentleman, I think his name is Aaron Slocum, um, he has a reputation for fine art, and when I say reputation, he has professional athletes and actors and others go to him, find him to have tattoos done, so, I told him, next time somebody I know, uh, shows up, let me know. Uh, the good thing was, when I walked in there, they were playing Stevie Ray Vaughan, so I told them that was in his favor, that, uh, that was playing, so, uh, but, uh, other than that, just, you know, the regular run-of-the-mill things, I've got a few things on the burner that I have to take care of, I might have to go to court, uh, for one or two people that haven't contacted me back yet, but, uh, hopefully not.
Nice.
Yes, um, just a few things, I'm gonna say quick, that's always my goal. Um, Park Avenue, Lapham Park sidewalks, we met, uh, we had a pre-construction meeting with Monroe County, planning development, who, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank them again, they, um, as you're probably aware, all communities in Monroe County, with the exception of Grease and the city of Rochester, uh, worked through, in cooperation on a community development black grant, it's a federal program. Monroe County manages the program for all of us, uh, through HUD. Monroe County manages a program for all of us, with the, with the exception of those two communities, and, um, we, as you know, we were awarded, uh, I guess we were tentatively awarded fifty-seven thousand last year, around this time, they, they put out the award, uh, they're intent, um, and it was since, uh, since after the company legislature passed, it's been bumped up to sixty, um, the way it's moved, so we're utilizing those funds and trying to get it done as fast as we can here in the springtime. The timing of the program puts it so we get final approval, final approval and, um, notice right before winter starts. So obviously we can't do that, they'd like to have it done before June, so we have a very tight window, uh, but, so we're sending out notices, working on the notices, um, to probably pass those out tomorrow, let the residents know as early as next week, uh, we're gonna get going on those. Um, obviously the North App Nectar project's been in the works since, I think the Matt Jeff Fielder, Economic Development Guide, did the application for that in two thousand and fourteen, um, and got, heard about the award in fifteen, um, so that's gonna get going here the next week or so, um, or probably the next week, really, um, hopefully they're doing some preliminary things now, working materials, getting survey worked out, um, and, and all that, so they've been doing behind-the-scenes stuff they can do. Um, also, we're entering construction season here, um, Monroe County is, heads up, Monroe County is gonna be working on Phillips Road, you know, Mill and Dave, and some improvements between State Road and just north of the expressway, um, so that's gonna be another bit of construction going on this year, so there's gonna be a lot of improvements, um, throughout the village. Um, one of the other items we've been kicking around, um, I know, uh, Tim Clancy, our foreman, has been kicking around for a couple of years, uh, is doing an, offering a spring cleanup. Um, we have a brush pickup coming up the week of the seventh, of May seventh, um, and with your okay, like to, uh, advertise there this next week on their website and on our social media page, let people know, and, and develop the guidelines for it, now for a spring leaf cleanup. Uh, we would go through first, probably put our leaf back on, and our, you know, the leaf box, go through just one time, everybody's gotta have things out on Sunday evening, um, prior to that week, you know, on, at May sixth, we'll go through once, get all the leaves, then we have to switch boxes, switch, switch back over to our chipper, then we have that, uh, we did check, we have a spot disposable, uh, the chipper, you know, the, uh, wood chips, we, they're down in sewer, but the, um, leaf pickup and that sort of debris, uh, we have a spot, um, working with the town where we can put that, 'cause they're rotating those piles through every couple of years, they, you know, they store them for a few years while they, the leaf piles, so we could still add to those, it's not too late, um, they could mix them in, and they'd have plenty of time to break down, so, um, it's a new thing, um, and I wanna give it a try, I think it'd be something very valuable, like, drive by and see, you know, twenty-five or thirty bags of leaves sitting out there, taking up valuable land, landfill space, and, and it's, it's kinda bothersome, especially we're celebrating it every day, and Earth Day, we just last week, and now we're throwing stuff in the landfill that would, that could work, so, if we could do that, that'd be great, if there's no objection to it.
Yeah.
Give it a shot. I was just gonna say, and then Heather was relentless in her, um, support of doing the spring cleanup.
Pushing.
It was, I agree. Um, and speaking of relentless pursuit, we are also working with Senator Howing's office and the clerk's office, um, to investigate an e-waste recycling day, um, and we're gonna have more on that, um, hopefully in the near future. It sounds like it's a pretty, uh, pretty doable thing, um, would require, obviously, that kind of, uh, effort we want to do on a Saturday, similar to when we do the household hazardous waste, um, but I think we, you know, do it Saturday morning, advertise, get a time, you know, perhaps, you know, work with, in conjunction with the town, um, try to develop a spot for it, and a program where we can get people scheduled, I don't know how it works, this is our first one, so, see if they schedule, or if it's just open, um, bring what you have and, uh, have a nice drop-off spot, we've got a spot, um, in mind, but we have to confirm that with the, with the owners, um, so I think that'd be a great thing if we could do that, too.
And we'd be teaming up with two other companies that would handle it, and actually, um, Senator Howing's office will be covering the cost.
That's, that's one of the very hard things, uh, you know, um, as, as, I know Will and Jake, you are aware, I know there were two CDs that were put out, what do you do with them, um, you know, do you dump them supposedly into your garbage, you know, that's picked up by waste management, and we don't pick them up, so how do you dispose of those kinds of things? So I think it'd be very, uh, very useful, um, for us to do that.
We're thinking, um, energy-ish, you know, stuff like...
Do they actually destroy that, that stuff, or what, what, what happens with that?
I'm, I'm not certain, exactly, there's companies around that, that, I think they break down the plastics, they let the shells get recycled, um, and then there's precious metals that are in them.
Yeah.
And that's a, back here, obviously, it's done a lot different, I know there's some other countries overseas where there, it's, it's devastating the environment in some of these countries, because they don't have the precious metal by whatever means, they can, they can extract them from these materials, and there's just, like, an e-waste wasteland, um, you see some pictures, it's really, it's really pretty sad, you know, little kids with toner all over them and going through, and some of the precious metals aren't, and some of the other materials, and they're not the best things for people, so, um, it's good that we can get them. And that's one of the downsides to having the requirements, I think, to pay to get rid of them now, is that, you know, most people go along with it, and that's great. And we had a call from, uh, Tannion Avenue one morning, somebody pulled up in a car, stopped, threw a TV out the back and took off, and they're like, what do we do with it now? It's an airline, we have, maybe, or, in, in any dark area, people are pulling over and dumping things out, so, it's nice to be, and have an outlet for that, and, just like the prescriptions and that hazard, household hazardous waste, they encourage people to do the right thing.
Senator Robach's office just had one of the CD in it with racist articles.
Very well received, so...
Just two more things quick, the, we are continuing to work on the clean communities, uh, recognition, um, we're in a meeting scheduled for this week, they have to reschedule, so we're continuing to work on that, um, and also continuing, I've reached out again today to R G D, um, in... And also continuing, I've reached out again today to R G D in consideration of the streetlight system. Still trying to go negotiate with them. After about six, six or seven months, I think they finally admitted that they do in fact have maps for the system. Said that we could look at them, but they included that we can't take any pictures of them. So I think I'm going to get some big, huge sheets of tracing paper and sit in there. After two or three hours, I bet they'll probably get sick of me and allow me to take pictures of them, because I didn't stipulate that I couldn't trace them.
Do you have any of them in the system?
Yeah. So in the last, the last, or, pardon, it's never quick.
Last dish.
The last dish, the second last, I've got, I was contacted by Verizon Wireless, who wanted to talk about putting notes on top of the village own telephone poles. They contacted R G D, I just remind you, they contacted R G D, and I had a conversation with the lady this afternoon. R G D insisted that it wasn't their pole, which contacted me, I said, "Yeah, they're charging us for it," so it is their pole. I gave her an identification number for it, so she's going to try to reach back out to R G D first to see about putting this note on top. There's some other questions. It's a way, I think, for them to enhance service scenarios, but I started doing some research on it, areas and communities, and New Jersey's one, where they started putting them up quite a bit, so I want to see, you know, they responded with different legislation about how many they can be, what they can be. So that might be something that's coming. Maybe they put less on a tower and they communicate with these little buildings to enhance service out further, but there's, I'm sure there's a fine balance that the community wants to have. Really, they look a lot like the Transformers. They're smaller than the Transformers that are up on the pole, but they seem like they were typically right on top of the pole. There's also...
...regulation.
Yeah, and I asked them, too, because at one spot where they were talking, it was very, about 25 feet away from a house, and I asked, "I know, you know, if there's any concern with, you know, it's radio transmission, the radio waves going there, and it's pretty close, just use it as supply some more information out forward on." And then last but not least, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Kyle, one of the Centennial babies, that is handling our A V services today. He's the only one at my house that knows how to run those things.
I got a note about the notes on top of the pole by Verizon there. That technology's been around for a while, and they use it primarily in big cities where they've stopped buildings. And for instance, down on Lake Road, there's not a very good reception for cell phones, and that would probably be primary place to put those notes, but not on every pole. I mean, maybe every 2,000 feet. And so there won't be that many of those where they tend to get at, but around the village, doesn't make sense to me.
It was right along the ridge, so I'm suspecting that it was something to take care of things that were below the ridge, kind of communicating. She said it works. Doesn't necessarily work in, it works with the tower, not...
It's regenerate, it's a regenerative system.
It's like a repeater kind of? She said it, this allowed them capacity for data and freed up some of that capacity that was being utilized for data, for voice on the regular tower.
That's right.
If it was up to me, we'd have two cans with a string between them, so I have not a lot of information on how those things work. Maybe I'll ask Kyle. But we do have one actually on top of the bridal shop building. Right, and that's what I told her, that there was one up there somewhere, I thought, but, and I think that's to get signals, nor, yeah. I'll continue to get the information and send along and see if, I'm pretty sure we don't own this pole, so, but, hold on, try to get R G D straightened out there, I guess.
Where are we with the E V station that we have approved out here? Are we waiting for funding for that? Maybe the Clean Community Award?
That was, pardon my conversation, I wanted to talk to Matt Halliday from the Tennessee Figure Lake Regional Planning Council that's working on that program. When we met, before I ordered, we have a P O and everything ready to go, but before I ordered, there's, I think it's an 80% match, or an 80% grant for some of the costs, up to $4,000, and that was right in that wheelhouse. So if we'd save a few thousand dollars by another week, or, you know, we're hoping to hear from them today, or if you're, you know, talk to them this week, rather, but we have something, I think it's set up for Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tuesday, I hope.
Tuesday, okay. So that's one of the topics, and as soon as we know then whether it's worth waiting or, you know, just going forward with it now. We do have a P O, we have the funds available, and we started doing some clearing over on that side of the paint shop and that, too, to be able to fix up that area or prep that area for it, so.
On the left?
Oh, it's flowing.
Public announcements, our next meeting is the Village Board Workshop on May 1st, and followed by Village Board meeting on May 10th. I would, I would like to say that I believe in terms of our tax bills that will be going out, it is my desire, my thought, plan to insert into those tax bills information regarding the change in the sewer, the, that's information on that. Then we'll be reaching every home, or at least every place that they go, and it will be, they've known maybe a little bit more than just through the Herald or through people. Is that a possibility for us to do that, or?
Not to everybody, because the company that actually gives us the tax bill, they bring it to us. Some are sent by them.
Okay.
But we get all the bank ones.
But as many as we have, we can do that, and then we can cover the ones...
Which is the majority. I did have one thing.
Yeah.
So we've started digitizing the minutes, and that's almost complete, and the building permits are, they started, they took the building permits, some of them?
I think so, yeah, some of them. We already had on them, thankfully.
Yeah. So it's almost going to be able to be completely searchable, so we're really excited about that. And then in the next budget, we will be purchasing that machine that we've discussed that will help Will. It's really, really cool. We had an experience with it, and it like shrinks a huge map into like one little spot, and you can send it out to someone. It's really, really cool, so we're really excited about that, too.
If there is nothing else? No?
Good.
True?
Good.
Side table? No? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It is 7:57. And a motion to close the meeting.
That's a second.
Old neighbor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. Shoot, on the street.
I didn't tell you. Have been my...
Dad, it's down.